All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Academic Achievement Committee meeting. Um, I'm Shayla Adams Stafford, the Chair of this committee, and the District Four Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you all for being here this evening. May I have a motion to adopt the January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting agenda?
So moved.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, the agenda is approved. May I have a motion to approve the December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes?
So moved.
All right, may I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. So we have one registered public comment speaker this evening. You have been registered to speak in a public forum where the committee will listen to your comments. The committee will then address, the committee will not address your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. Just, uh, before I go forward, is the public speaker, is, are they here?
I'm glad you stopped yourselves. Like, it's a lot she's gonna have to read for me to tell her that she is not in the intended box.
Okay, okay. All right, so, um, if it's all right, I guess we will, we can go forward and then, you know, if we need to revisit that, then we can. All right, well, let's go forward to item three point O. So, right now, we are going to hear some presentations from the administration. Uh, item three point one will be on response to intervention or RTI, multi-tiered systems of support, also referred to as MTSS. So I'll turn it over to Dr. White for item three point one. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Thank you so much for having us. Um, I have the pleasure of being here with my colleague tonight, Dr. Helen Coley, who is our Chief of School Support and Leadership, and she will introduce her team.
Thank you, Dr. White, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I am excited about the great information that colleagues from the Division of School Support and Leadership have to share with you this evening. I will begin by, um, first introducing all of you. If you have seen her before, I'm sure you haven't have. If you, if you have not, I'm introducing to you now Ms. Elizabeth Faison, who is our Associate Superintendent of Student Services. Her team members have worked very hard to ensure that what is expected this evening is in fact achieved. So at this time, I will defer to Ms. Faison, and she will introduce members of her team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coley, and thank you, board members. Good afternoon, everyone. It is a great pleasure always to share our work um, around the, the work that we're doing for students and student services. Tonight, joining me is Anisa Freeman Jones. She is our PBIS Coordinator. Additionally, uh, Ms. Keisha Butler is joining us. She is our five oh four coordinator. And we also have Mr. Richard Moody. He is our Supervisor of Student Engagement and Support. And so, the first of three presentations that we will do tonight is around PBIS. Um, and Anisa Freeman Jones will do that. She will also introduce the multi-tiered systems of support. I will follow up with that, um, and, um, expand that information around our response to intervention. Um, and then Ms. Keisha Butler will follow up and close out the session with five oh four services. So, Anisa?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here and a pleasure to meet you. This Faison, you gonna share the screen? I can't see the screen. All right, it's an honor and a pleasure to, um, talk about positive behavior interventions and supports. Um, our objectives for today, as, um, announced by Ms. Faison, is to introduce multi-tiered systems of support, um, discuss the foundational tenets of PBIS, implementation of PBIS in our schools, response to intervention and referral teams, section five oh four, and any updates and innovations we have. So, uh, positive behavior interventions and supports is a data-driven, multi-tiered framework. Um, and it is for all of our stakeholders as we address climate and culture, social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health supports needed in our schools, um, and similar organizations to make sure that we are effective in our practices and what we do in our school buildings. And when we talk about being effective, uh, we are referring to anything and everything we do in our building, whatever programs we implement, whatever, whatever interventions and strategies we implement. We want to make sure that they are effective. That is, we are reaching whatever our academic and our behavior goals may be. So, we specify that positive behavior interventions and supports of PBIS is a framework. It is not a program. Um, a program gives you very specific prescribed steps that you must follow in order to achieve the desired outcome. With a framework, we like to think about when you're building a home, when you're building a house. You don't start with the granite. You don't start with the cabinets. You don't start with the plumbing. You start with the foundation. You start with the frame of the house. And after the frame is up, then you can layer on all the other necessary things that are needed in order for the house to be built. So that is your drywall. That is your plumbing. That is your electricity. Everything is layered on at the proper time in the proper sequence in order for you to get that desired outcome, which is that beautiful home that you designed. So the framework addresses these things. Um, it is to increase effectiveness and efficiency in our school buildings. It is to ensure that we support consistent adult behavior and the process for continuous improvement in our schools. And continuous improvement does not imply that there's something wrong. What it means is that we are constantly self-reflecting and self-evaluating to make sure we are continuing to grow and continuing to be relevant to practices that make us an effective school organization. And finally, the framework allows you to align other initiatives. So again, going back to the analogy of the house, it allows us to layer on other, um, programs and initiatives that allow us to be an effective school builder, restorative practices, social, emotional learning, and the like. So the roots of PBIS are in response to intervention. And very briefly, uh, a tiered intervention model says, okay, we have the foundational piece that says, these are all the things that are available to all of us in the school building. That would be our tier one practices. So this would be our curriculum. This would be systems we have in place, um, programs that we have in place, things that we do consistently. Um, and when we talk about being consistent, I want you to think about your favorite fast food place. My favorite is Chick-fil-A. And they are very consistent in their practices. You know the script yourself. You know when they're gonna be open and closed. You know what's on the menu. Uh, my daughter currently works for Chick-fil-A, and she comes home and says, my pleasure. I think it's the best thing ever, right? So, think of all of those systems that are in place in our school building that are consistent, and they are every day, and they are for everyone. So out of tier one, we're gonna gather some data, and that data's gonna let us know, you know what, we have a group of students or staff members that need additional help. So then we're gonna target our interventions and strategies to that specific group. So if attendance is an issue among this group, we're gonna layer on some additional, um, supports and interventions to improve attendance. If math is a specific problem for this group of students based on scores, we're gonna layer on another, um, level of supported interventions to that group. So tier two targets groups. Out of that data, we may discover, you know what, Anisa needs some additional supports, right? She's not, she needs still something else. So tier three says, you know what, we're going to individualize the interventions and supports. So that may include a functional behavior assessment that may lead to a behavior intervention plan. It may lead to a behavior contract. It may lead to one-on-one academic support. But it says, you know what, looking at our data and looking at the lack of progress, Anisa needs another layer of support, and this is going to be individual. Now, that doesn't mean we strip the student of the other layers of support. Layering the supports is what we're doing. And once a student has achieved their goals, then we take them out of those supports because they are no longer needed, which means we are always tracking progress and looking at data. So the key components of PBIS are first, a consistent approach to school discipline. Um, we have learned over time that inconsistency is probably the number one interruption to any school building. When everyone else, everyone is kind of doing their own thing. And going back to that fast food analogy, everybody knows their role, and everybody completes their role in order for your order to come out the way that you want it. And when it doesn't, as a customer, what do we do? We complain. We say, hey, this wasn't quite right. And so we want to make sure that everyone in the schoolhouse approaches school discipline the same way, through systems and through trainings, and everyone doing the same thing every day, all the time. We want to make sure that the schoolhouse has a clear set of positive expectations and behaviors. That is, instead of telling students what we don't want, we want to tell students what we do want. So some of you may be familiar with schools that soar or that are respectful, responsible, and ready to learn um, with the specific behaviors attached, because we want to let our students know, this is what respect looks like in the hallway. This is what responsibility looks like in the cafeteria, and we want to be very clear about what we want from them. We also want to have in place teaching intentionally these expectation, these behaviors. It is great to have them on posters and to have them and our pledges and different things like that and morning announcements. But we want to be intentional about teaching the behaviors that we expect here when the students come into the schoolhouse. We want to make sure that we encourage expected behavior. So many of you may be familiar with incentives and different things like that. But the most important thing is that we acknowledge the positive behavior when we see it, because what we nurture will grow. So if we nurture positive behavior, that is, we give most of our time and attention to when students are doing what we want them to do, that is the behavior that will grow. And so we want to make sure that they are in an environment where they are being recognized, um, for positive behavior. We also want to have in place procedures to discourage inappropriate behavior. That is, having responses that are consistent and, um, they are best practices in how we respond to inappropriate behavior. We want to have a solid policy, discipline policy in place so that it is layered with interventions and supports and not just consequences. And finally, we don't know if anything is working if we don't monitor it. That is, we collect that data to say, are we making progress? Are we moving, moving the needle, um, towards our desired outcome and making sure we evaluate that? So, positive behavior interventions and supports has been a state initiative. Now, this is the twenty-second year. So, coma regulations, um, state positive behavior interventions and support program means the research-based systems approach method adopted by the State Board to build capacity among school staff to adopt and sustain the use of positive, effective practices to create learning environments where teachers can teach and students can learn. This is what the Maryland State Department of Education came up with over twenty years ago. The Maryland looks at two sets of data. They look at truancy K through twelve, and they look at suspensions K through five. And the regulations go on to say that if one percent of your entire enrollment in a given year was habitually truant, then that school, if they're not already doing so, must implement a multi-tiered system of support. If they are already implementing a multi-tiered system of support, then the school is asked to make truancy a target as something that they are going to intentionally work on to decrease that number. Uh, when it comes to suspensions K through five, if ten percent of your entire enrollment was suspended, then you are asked to implement a multi-tiered system of support. And if you're already doing so, we ask that, the, the coma regulations ask that you then focus on suspensions. So just a little tidbit there, suspensions, Maryland looks at the first suspension of each student. It doesn't count any other suspension. So, Anisa could have been suspended fifteen times. They only counted the first time. So the regulation really means that ten percent of your entire enrollment was suspended at least once in that given school year. Esa also indicates that we need to focus on climate and culture. And as there's a lot of reading, so I, you know, do invite you to go back, but I just wanted to highlight that school climate and safety, um, which are so entirely linked to academic achievement, active student and teacher engagement, and tiered systems of support for all students. So even our federal regulation says, hey, we have looked at the data. We know that this works, and we want all schools to implement a multi-tiered system of support. The Office of Special Education says, if there is a student where behavior is a disruption to their learning, that in their IEP, we must outline positive behavior interventions and supports that we are going to implement to assist this student, um, with their behavior. So again, coming from the federal government, um, positive behavior interventions and supports is something we need to have in our schools. And then finally, in our own administrative procedure five zero six two, which was updated January of last year, redefine, um, positive behavior intervention strategies and supports. The school-wide and individual application of data-driven, trauma-informed actions, instruction, and assistance to promote positive social and emotional growth while preventing or reducing challenging behaviors in an effort to encourage educational and social emotional success. So even within, um, Prince George's County Public Schools, part of how we deal with behavior is to make sure we are implementing this multi-tiered system of support, PBIS, in our schools. Currently, we have a hundred and thirty-four schools that have been trained and are implementing, um, PBIS, and this includes some of our charter schools and our alternative schools. Um, in place in a school, um, we want to find the following things. They must have the following things. They must have a team, a PBIS team, and a minimum team is five people, and one must be an administrator. And all teams must be trained, um, in implementing tier one PBIS. Um, each team must select a PBIS coach who must attend quarterly meetings. Schools are to submit an action plan for the year, and they are to submit self-evaluation data three times a year that are, that is then submitted to MSDE, and each school is asked to complete at least one site visit. So as the PBIS Coordinator, um, here are just some of the major, uh, things that I will do with my schools when I will train, um, teams in tier one. And this year, we'll be able to offer training to invited schools in tier two practices. I hold quarterly meetings with the PBIS coaches, complete site visits, collect data, and send that data to MSDE. I also serve as the liaison between the state team and our district. I provide target support, supports for coaches, teams, and staff, so schools will let me know, hey, we're, we're having some issues with this component or that component, and I will create or target, um, supports for them and assist with the alignment of other initiatives being implemented in the schoolhouse. So some ongoing supports that I have for my coaches. Uh, we do have a PBIS Google Classroom that I use to push out information, um, as well as allow schools to exchange, um, some of their best practices, um, and samples that they're doing in their buildings. Um, each year, I provide some kind of materials for the coaches to use with their teams. Last year, um, we were able to purchase for each, uh, PBIS school, the prim manual, the pre-referral intervention manual, as well as the behavior intervention manual to be used when they are developing discipline policy, professional development to implement in their CIT SST practices, um, all in a way to look at behavior, having resources that say, hey, these are the most effective um, interventions and strategies to use for any given behavior. And this year, we supplied each, um, PBIS team with the PBIS team handbook so that they can stay focused on what implementation looks like and have that as an additional resource. And we also purchased an online professional development subscription for, um, the PBIS coaches as well. In addition to, again, any kind of targeted trainings or supports, um, that they need, they can let me know. We will create something together. So we also have recognition for our schools. Um, PBIS Emphasis Week, which takes place in May. Um, we did not do another year twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, um, because of all of what we've been going through with, uh, COVID nineteen, but we're feeling really confident that this year, that schools can showcase what they've been doing, um, to keep implementation going. Um, we have state recognition. Um, the state, you can, schools can apply for banners for badges and different categories of tier one. So, um, eleven schools earned badges for the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which was really a great accomplishment because it was very challenging to shift practices, um, when we went virtual. And so it was really exciting to see all of the schools, um, and all that they did to shift over their practices. Um, we also had two of our schools earn PBI, the PBIS Kindness Grant. This is a national grant where eighty-two schools in the entire nation, um, earned this grant. Twelve of those schools were from the state of Maryland, and two of those schools were from Prince George's County, and we are super excited um, about that accomplishment. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize Grand Canyon University. Um, we have, uh, just an awesome partnership with them, uh, for many years now. They provide free of charge professional development workshops, um, at meetings. We just had one in January. We're doing three workshops, uh, after school where they're providing contact hours for staff. They provide lunch and staff to schools to celebrate staff, and the only thing they ask in return is five minutes to talk about the online programs they have for adult learners. And they, each year, they give me a whole bunch of goodies that I can give to my coaches to show them how much they are appreciated. So, uh, Grand Canyon University has just been an awesome, um, partner, uh, to me in the surrounding counties in terms of supporting PBIS. And that's it for me.
Thank you so much for that presentation. That was awesome, and congratulations for the recognition on those, those schools, that you said eleven schools were recognized at the state and then two nationally. I'd love to hear more about that. Um, so I see, uh, some hands up. I'll ask if Board Member Thomas, if you'd like to go first, um, with any questions?
Thanks for recognizing me, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone, and thank you very much for that thorough presentation. I want to echo the comments of my colleague and in congratulating, uh, you and your hard work and, and the recognition you're receiving is, is much deserved. Um, so great work. Um, I'm curious. I have, I feel like usually, uh, the same questions, um, always, and in this case, it's around, um, kind of just like what kind of data or metrics we have to be able to pull from the work that your team has been doing? I mean, are we able to see um, any, any quantitative, um, correlation between, um, where, where campuses where this is being implemented and results on either academic outputs or decreased suspensions? Um, or, or things like that. So do you, uh, do we have any like data or results to, to speak to at the moment?
So Liz, would you like me to address that, or did you want to address it on behalf of the department?
You can address it.
Okay, so, schools, the data that schools are asked to submit to me are self-evaluation da- data that measures implementation. Um, you can always pull, I would imagine, suspension data and different things like that from schools, you know, just in general. And so if you wanted to know, oh, what schools are PBIS schools, that is something that I'm sure you can make the request through the proper channels to have. Um, but we do not have a team that just pulls the data and says, okay, this school implements PBIS, and this is where the academic data was this year, or their suspension data was this year, et cetera. And now here is where it is a year or two after that. Um, and I want to, um, really make clear that the framework is not there just to address suspension and truancy. That is something, though, that the coma regulations, uh, emphasize because you have to have some kind of anchors of, you know, what's, you know, something to measure. But the framework is not just to measure suspensions and truancy.
Thanks so much. I have to apologize. I got disconnected right as I asked my question. So I heard the like last thirty seconds of your answer. I don't mean to make you have to repeat yourself, but I did actually just want to know. So if you remember this, the kind of first half of what you said, that would be helpful.
No worries.
Sorry about that.
Um, I said that I'm sure that there are measures where you can pull suspension data or truancy data from schools. I'm sure that there are channels that allow for that, but there is not a specific, um, team that pulls the data and says, okay, these schools are PBIS schools. We'll use this, um, year as a baseline for academics or behavior, and this is where it's moved from here since implementation. That does not exist at this time.
Got it, okay. Um, and I'm sure, you know, uh, you, you all, I know, have a very hardworking team, so and my intention with, with my questions is never to undermine the work you're doing. I think it would be great to be able to see that. Um, I think it could also be helpful to maybe, um, you know, get some, get some good, uh, meaningful survey data, both from, um, you know, the, the teachers and staff that are, that are executing this, as well as for the, um, let me say like user experience, I guess, students and families that get to, um, you know, be participating in this as well. Um, because I think that, that's always helpful, um, you know, getting, just getting to, to know feedback from people that are participating directly, so.
Our district does do a, a school climate survey. Um, I know MSDE implemented that, and since we've kind of gone virtual and then not virtual, I'm not sure if MSDE is going to administer that again. It was part of what we called our house in terms of measurement. So that is available on the MSDE, uh, website.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And if I could add, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Thomas, to your question, the word in this division that everyone is quite aware of is evidence. So just as we indicate that schools are in fact expected to show delivery of these models, my question is always to the team, what is the evidence that it is occurring with respect to each of the schools that has been listed? What we are and what we have not been able to do as past, we have not been able to actually go out and conduct those site visits as we have done in past, which would give us further, um, quantitative data around specifics of program implementation. But as it is current, it is within the system. We know that the number of schools that are supposed to implement, but I like your idea specific to the provision perhaps of a survey to find out from our stakeholders if in fact what we are expecting is actually their opinion or impression about what is being received. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's, it's, I think, the, the reason I always come to that is because, you know, time and time again, you know, we, we hear from teachers, right, where we, you know, hearing these conversations, are we like, great ideas, great products, great strategies that we want to implement, but then when it actually comes down to the end of the funnel, um, not, it, it's, it's one, I think, of misalignment on people's level of investment. I think sometimes execution may or may not happen with fidelity. And so the only ways that, a- a- anytime that I actually get to hear that is usually just from talking to somebody in a very casual setting and just getting an idea. And then I hear, I hear real authentic thoughts about like whatever system we're, we're referencing. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that you agree. I just wanted to give that voice to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
In addition, I wanted to add to that. Um, when we look at data that impacts our student behavior and attendance, because we are a system that layers on, as Anisa talked about, the multi-tiered systems of approaches, we do have restorative approaches, we do have peer mediation, we have PBIS, we have so many interventions that are occurring at the same time. Um, it can be difficult to isolate and say, this one intervention is the reason or the sole reason that we saw an increase or a decrease, depending on what it is that we wanted to change in the school. And so I too think that the survey would be really great because it's targeted around PBIS, but we have our suspension data, behavioral data, attendance, and academic data that is, you know, uh, available for all of our schools to see, um, where our schools are performing.
No, thank you for that context. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were there other questions? I had a few questions as well. Thank you. Were there other questions? I had a few questions as well. So I wanted to ask just around the, first I'll start with the model schools that have won this national recognition. I'm wondering, you know, how do you all leverage their success with this particular program? To share with the other hundred thirty-four schools that are implementing this, are they, are they serving as a model site or a demonstration site? Given that they've won this, this great recognition?
So yes, schools are asked to share their best practices. And whatever it is that they're doing around a particular component of the tier one. When schools ask, hey, what school is really doing well? Is this school an exemplar in this? Can you attach me to a school that's exemplar in a particular area? We do align that, I do align those coaches together so they can exchange information. During our quarterly meetings, we highlight these schools. And again, via the Google classroom, they can pull school samples and exchange information. Because, you know, school may be exemplar in one area and not so much in another area. And so they are able to kind of get together collectively and share and exchange information.
Yeah, no, that's, that's wonderful. And I'm wondering, you know, as, as we talk about measurement, you know, and, and you stated that they are self evaluating. What is sort of the metric that they're using to determine the effectiveness of the program at their school site? And how much of what we're seeing in the model school is embedded in that evaluation?
So the self evaluation that they are submitting comes from the Maryland State Department of Education. The first measurement that we use is called the implementation phases inventory, which has, it is divided between the initiation phase, the inflammation phase and the maintenance phase. And so it measures where the school is in terms of their implementation. What do they have in place? And part of that evaluation is the collection of data. Are you collecting data to measure the effectiveness of whatever it is that you're implementing in your building? And so that could vary from building to building. You know, that varies from grade level, elementary to middle to high. And so the self evaluation says, hey, we wanted to implement this particular program around, let's say, math struggles. And so they are to collect the data to see if implementing this program, when we're doing it with fidelity. And if we are, how is it impacting, you know, the math scores? And it's the same with if they're implementing something to address behavior. So there isn't one universal thing. One school is implementing this because this is what works for their population, their demographic could be a little different than what another school is doing.
Seeing as, thank you so much for that. And I'm, I'm thinking and wondering that seeing as we have these accolades with, you know, these schools that have this designation. Could that evaluation tool be normed around what, what is happening in some of those schools that are receiving some of that recognition? That's just the, we don't have to answer that. I'm just thinking it. This is just something that I'm thinking about. Because you have this great infrastructure, right? That I'm seeing here, and I'm just wondering that, that, that is just a thought I'm throwing out there. My other question is around, just sort of how are parents and stakeholders included in PBIS frameworks in different schools? Are they part of sort of developing what the recognitions will be and you know, evaluating the school level discipline procedures?
So part of the PBIS team, one point one of the tier one components is developing a team. And schools are asked to have parent representation on their PBIS team. So there is a parent voice lending itself to implementation, to reviewing systems and different things that are to be implemented into the school building, helping to explain what's happening to other parents. So, you know, the, the rep, the parent representative should then have a way to communicate with other parents, right? So they can have a connection to what's happening in their school building. This is a challenge because we'll have parents come and, you know, and then they're like, oh, no, I just really wanted to help with planning the events. I didn't really want to go through training and different things like that. So sometimes it can be a challenge for schools not only to finally recruit a parent onto the team, but to keep the parent on the team. Some of our schools will use, who have parent liaisons, use their parent liaison on the team and that person then is like the parent lens. So you know, it is part of the development of the team to have parent representation.
Okay. And then just, do you all use any like survey like panorama to give feedback on climate and cultures? I know we mentioned that as, you know, sort of being the bucket that this falls under. And if you do, could we see some of the feedback from that?
Okay, I am not familiar with panorama. However, if schools want to administer a climate and culture survey to their stakeholders, students, staff or parents, PB, they have access to PBIS apps. I just had a school ask me today for a survey that they could administer to their staff members. And I sent the information to them and if this is a survey that they want to administer to their staff members, then I will open the survey and they send out the link and close the survey when they ask me to, and that way they can pull that data. But again, this is, you know, when the school asks for it, it is most certainly available to them to have.
And that might be a follow-up, Dr. White, about the, and I'm not saying necessarily panorama. The panorama survey is the one to use, just generally like for the entire district so that you could have that snapshot, right, of culture and climate, kind of like what Josh is saying as well, having that snapshot at it at a district level of how do students perceive culture and climate? And then you can sort of filter it by schools that are, and, and I don't know, maybe there is something that you already have within the, I was gonna, I feel like we've talked about this before, Dr.
I want to say it was Dr. Coley or Dr. Faison mentioned that MSD every year normally does a climate and culture survey for our students. And we receive that survey information back as a system and that data is made very transparent, placed on our website and shared with all the families from each school. They may not have done it last year simply because we're in a pandemic, but normally, Dr. Coley, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to say that's a yearly survey that's done automatically. And it is, it surveys the teachers, it surveys our parents and it surveys our children. That is correct. And the data from those surveys, school specific, is there are expectations around it. This is your data. Now what are you to do with your data? Going through each part, because it's always interesting how a student may feel about the data as compared to how a teacher and how a parent may feel. That's always amazing to me. But we take that data and based upon it itself, the expectation is to share what the data yields with the school team.
In addition, I, I was just gonna say the data is uploaded by our research and evaluation office. So it's now available online under the website, under that particular office's website. So they gathered the data and they also provide summaries of the district of elementary, middle and high school and then of individual schools and they posted on their website.
So I guess it would be interesting to see the cross section of schools that are involved in the PBIS program and some of those responses as well. Mr. Moody?
I, I had a comment that was gonna just add on a little bit to what Anisa was saying about parent involvement and and it has completely gone out of my head. So if it comes back, I will raise my hand again.
I am so sorry, Mr. Moody, I got caught up in that question.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones, for that presentation and I'd love to learn more about the schools that received the recognition. So I'll, I'll ask for that in the follow-up. So I guess we can go ahead now to our next question about, our next topic, which is RTI and MTSS.
Hey, thank you. So that was a great setup for talking about response to intervention. And the two vehicles that we have in our school system through our school intervention teams as well as our student support teams. So right now we have an administrative procedure that provides this guidance to every single school in our system around how the teams are supposed to work and what their goal is. And that every school should have, number one, have a team, have a regularly scheduled meeting team that is identifying students consistently, that are providing interventions after they determine what interventions are necessary for students. And then that team is monitoring the student's progress towards meeting the actual goals. What the document also recognizes and we recognize that parents are certainly our partners and critical as students are being referred for either their academic, behavioral, social, emotional. And we'll get into the next slide that talks about the, the various reasons that a student may be referred. But our parents really are the experts in their children. They know their children. So to exclude them from this process would not give us a comprehensive lens of the student that we're working with. And so our administrative procedure also talks about the problem solving process that, that I, that starts with first identifying the problem and then determining what are the goals that we want to accomplish. After we determine what the goals are, then we establish the interventions. And then we will determine after that, after we are implementing those interventions, we are monitoring to be able to determine how the stu, how the student is performing and how they're progressing towards the goal. And so there are a number of administrative procedures that tie in and utilize our student intervention team as well as our student support teams. And so it is desired that every school establishes the meeting schedule at the beginning of the school year and that they are meeting consistently to support the students. And so this slide provides a number of categories, concerns, issues, reasons that a student may be referred to either our student intervention team or our student support team. And so additional administrative procedures that support the use of this referral team would be our attendance administrative procedure fifty-one thirteen. Also, our promotion, retention and acceleration administrative procedure also utilizes the sit and SST team. Therefore, no student should be retained if they have not been first referred to this vehicle and this body that is going to look at the students academic concerns and then develop a process so that we're not waiting until the student fails, but that we're addressing the student as we initially began to see the student having a concern. So again, that's another administrative procedure that utilizes our sit and SST team. Home and hospital teaching administrative procedure, as well as our students write some responsibilities handbook utilizes our sit and SST process for level one through three into interventions. And so you may ask, what's the difference between a sit and SST? And so this particular slide gives a correlation or a comparison, if you will, on how they are similar and how they are different. So number one, a student is first referred to the sit team. If the student does not show adequate progress after this two or six weeks that the interventions are implemented, then that student is then referred to SST. So that's how they correlate. The second thing I'd like to, to highlight is the membership. What does a sit team, what constitutes a sit teams? Who are the members? So our teachers, our professional school counselors, certainly the administrator is leading the charge around that as well as our school-based specialists. And so how our SST teams differ is they layer on additional resources external to the school building. It may be the school psychologist, it may be a mental health clinician that the student is seeing external to the school who can provide additional information around the student as to what the school can do to provide support to the student. It may even consist of a school resource officer. It depends on the reason the student is being referred. And so both teams has a determined timeline or suggested timeline that intervention should be implemented before we are moving to the very next level. And again, our parents are certainly our partners. Our administrative procedure notes that we should be inviting parents at least five days before our sit and SST team meets to give them an opportunity to be a part of the process so that our parents are not blindsided, so that we're not doing something to their student, but we're doing something with the family in support of the student's growth and progress. So this is one thing I wanted to highlight that while our teams are meeting to address and plan for and to implement strategies to assist our stu, our students, if at any time they suspect that a student has a disability, if it is suspected, then they would refer to the appropriate team, either it be the IEP team or the five oh four team. And Ms. Keisha Butler will follow me and talk more about the section five oh four, the process eligibility and accommodations. The other thing I wanted to note that if at any time during the sit and SST process, if a parent or guardian, if they request a special education evaluation, then we are immediately referring that student to the IEP team for their consideration and for their next steps. And so this process really requires our schools to make the right decisions around what is best for students. And as Anisa talked about, the different tiers, that tier one is what we do for every student. Tier two is what we would do for a group, a small group of students who perhaps have a common concern like attendance, or it could be an anger management group that is developed to assist this particular group of students. It could be a group of students who are receiving reading or math interventions. And then the, the third tier supports an individual student. And so this chart just shows how decisions should be made around the type of intervention. The frequency of the intervention and the length of the intervention. So if a student is making adequate progress and they've made their goal, they've met the goal, then the team may decide to fade out that intervention. And if the two, if the student is making continual progress and the team decides, uh, if they had a little more time, then they would actually meet their goal. So they may decide to continue an intervention. They may even decide to change the intervention altogether if they see it's just not working. Then they can regroup and modify what they have previously determined should be the plan forward and make an adjustment, make a pivot. And so we would implement more intensive interventions if we see that what we're doing is currently not working. Or if the student is making progress, we could either discon, discontinue the intervention or we can ramp up the intervention as well as change the intervention that we previously determined. And so as schools are implementing this sit and SST process, we're first really looking at who are the students in the building who require interventions? So if we just look at our attendance administrative procedure, our attendance administrative procedure talks about our students who are chronically absent. That means they have missed at least ten percent of their membership days out of school. And so we already with that data know that that's a group of students who require an intervention. And it is written in the administrative procedure for attendance that students who are chronically absent and who are habitually truant would be referred to our sitting SST teams. Then we are also looking at who are the staff members who are actually providing the interventions and what are the resources that we have in the building to support the student? And how will they implement, how will the interventions be implemented? And how will the implement, how will the interventions be implemented? Will it be an individual session with the student? Uh, will it be in small groups? What time would it be? And how long are we going to um, implement certain strategies that the team determines to put in place? And so, when we look at this, monitoring must be at the root of everything that's done. And so, uh, quite a few years ago, our school system developed an online tracking tool. Right now, teachers have access to this tracking tool by going to the staff portal and clicking on um, our uh, response to intervention tracking tool and logging in using their username and password. And what this particular s- uh, tool allows us to do? It allows teachers to refer a student through our online tracking tool. They can also see if a new student that they are receiving has a previous referral. They can also see the notes and the interventions that have been done or implemented for that student in the past. And so, when a, when that teacher decides to make an inter- uh, referral for this particular student, they too can document um, their actions and what they are doing to support the student. And so, this information travels with the student so that we're not only um, communicating within the school, but we're communicating across the district with every professional who has been involved and who has engaged this particular student. And so, even while we were uh, doing full virtual learning, um, our online tracking tool was available. We also provide communication to schools on how to hold SIT and SA- SST team meetings while we were virtual and certainly now that we are back um, in face-to-face. And so, the person who oversees this work is Mr. Timothy Hips. He has also provided training to several schools um, this year already, how to access the tool, how to utilize the tool, and the types of referrals um, that should be made. And so, he's in special education, but he serves as a thought partner to uh, the Department of Student Services around this work. And so, last but not least, I did want to highlight some of the resources that are available um, to our schools. So, um, a couple of years ago, our school system revamped and rewrote our um, administrative procedure. And in so doing, created um, a student support team manual. They also created a Google site uh, where you click on the link, you'll find the manual there. You'll also find three videos that were developed to talk about how to collaborate with parents. It also talks about the RTI and multi-tiered um, systems of support process, how it's monitored and implemented, and also accountability structures. And so, that's my presentation for RTI.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll open it up if there are any questions here from my colleagues. I had a couple of questions here. Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, I wanted to uh, just get some understanding around interventions. I know when Dr. White did her presentation this year to the board, she talked about all of the investments and interventions that uh, PGCPS is doing to ensure that we're supporting students that have really been affected by this educational disruption. And so, I wanted to know sort of if, if you could tell us or at a high level provide to us some information about the effectiveness of those interventions as it relates to the RTI process? So, are you seeing that with the use of this particular intervention, you're able to support students with meeting their goals better, faster, more efficiently? Or eh, you know, with more fidelity, sort of maybe if we can get some insight on to the effectiveness of those interventions on students?
I'll, I'll pick that one up. So, uh, one of the things is we really worked on several of the interventions to try to um, especially at the younger ages, to implement them directly in the curriculum. So, as teachers are going through and they identify um, certain characteristics that students may have, we want to be really intentional about how we map the intervention to what is necessarily going on with the student. Um, what I will say is that every December by um, MSDE, we have to submit um, an intervention report for grades K to three. And uh, she mentioned Timothy Hips along with Dr. Whitehead, who is our Director of Early Learning. We really try to track in the RTI tool because it allows us to see every student, where they are with the interventions provided. Part of what we'll do is, is a report out for ESAR and for Kerwin, all the funds that we receive on certain interventions, is to provide a report on for each one, students who were engaged, where they started, how they ended, what did we find? What were key takeaways? We'll be able to survey our teachers to find um, what it was like in practice on the ground because we could look at something and think it's a tier one and in, and it matches specifically what we're looking for. But we found with the student population that we have, that our teachers say it doesn't work. So, we'll be able to get some of that valuable information. The other thing, just to point out, is that several of our interventions are after school and it's a process to begin interventions that are after school simply because you have to hire staff, you have to put staff in place, you have to um, you know, make sure that we get with parents, that they fill out permissions, that we provide Zooming. So, it's a lot of that going on and, and just working through the process of setting teachers up so that the moment they start, they get paid. So, um, a lot of our interventions, some of those that are after school, some have started, some will start in the month of February. And again, any intervention that we specifically purchase through the intervention grants, we will be monitoring and able to provide some feedback.
Would you say that in, just you describing the RTI um, sort of intervention components, it just took me back to when I, I was doing, working as a RTI coordinator. My brain just went back to trying to get kids to stay after school and trying to make sure they came. And I remember some of those challenges. Um, would you say, you know, that having more funding for students to, let's say, take an after-school bus to participate in an intervention would help support um, students being able to take advantage of some of the interventions that you have?
So, normally, if we do something systemically, system-wide, we include transportation. However, we already know where we stand with transportation. So, what we thought first and foremost is to get our students home. Our students need to be home and then we, we are offering most of our after-school opportunities that's system-wide um, virtually. There could be, in fact, though, some schools who are doing um, after-school programs within their own buildings and, and they've already worked out those accommodations with their families. But when we try to attack things from a system, number one, if we're gonna have transportation, we're gonna automatically put that in, we're gonna write for. But when, when we realize where we were in general and the times that we wanted kids to make sure that they, you know, were home and, you know, safely with their families, able to start homework and those kind of things, we didn't want to put them or staff in a position to be in schools and we may not be able to transport and we're waiting for someone to come get them. But normally, it's, it's when, in a normal year, when we have after-school events, our kids are there, transportation is provided and all is well. Right now, we're trying to do as many things as we can virtually to, you know, accommodate as many students as possible.
Oh, yes. I'm, I'm talking just ge- in general.
Oh, in general, yeah.
Would that, would that support even, even more, would that support students being able to take advantage of the interventions?
Yeah, and, and our schools and systemically, in a normal year, always provides transportation. It's rare that we would offer an opportunity and not um, also include ways for um, our students to get home. So, we work with Transportation Department as our partners to ensure that occurs.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to keep going here because I know we also have, I think, um, Board Member Boojah Stradler is still here, yes. So, she still has her presentation as well. So, we'll move on to five oh four. Thank you so much for that presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me to be able to talk about Section five oh four this evening with you. I am Keisha Butler. I'm the five oh four program coordinator um, for the district. Um, in general, I handle all formal grievances, um, systemic trainings and district initiatives. We have a five oh four compliance analyst in our office this year and Dr. Owens manages all data for Section five oh four. So, that includes our ADA database, um, SchoolMax information system, and supports our state data collection. And we also have um, Joel Rich, who is our five oh four compliance specialist in the office, who provides overall school support to include school-based trainings, meeting participation, and case consultations with schools. The Section five oh four program in PGCPS has two major which would be the case managers, who are our professional school counselors, and also five oh or building facilitators, which would be a school-based administrator, such as a principal or an assistant principal. And if the principal is the only administrator in the building, we ask that they are able to designate a non-classroom-based staff member to serve as the designate to partner with. In general, um, our case managers, they facilitate the meetings, they schedule meetings, um, handle referrals and are the first level of contact for our families. This five oh four building facilitators oversees the practices of our five oh four case managers and they serve as the liaison between the school and our office. We assist with helping with parent concerns, um, and ensuring proper five oh four practices in their buildings. And our office supports these initiatives um, to be a um, fair eye um, when schools and parents aren't able to come to a equal um, understanding of the process. So, what is Section five oh four? I'm going to try to be as succinct, as ambiguous as OCR is with Section five oh four. They do provide as a, an outline, which talks about who is supposed to be in the team, uh, what are your referral or your um, evaluation processes? However, everything else in between is determined by the LEA. So, five oh four is a federal civil rights law that prohibits disability discrimination, designed to simply ensure that all of our students with disabilities have equal access to our educational and extracurricular programs such as field trips, um, ex- sports activities, clubs, and any type of organizations provided through PGCPS. It is intended to provide access and that educational benefit which separates us from IDEA, which is commonly referred to when we're talking about students with disabilities. So, five oh four levels the playing field for both of those visible and what we would call invisible disabilities. An example of a visible disability would be a physical um, mobility where a student may need a wheelchair. And an invisible disability would be something similar to anxiety or ADHD. Section five oh four program in PGCPS, currently, we have two thousand one hundred and seventy-three students that are found five oh four eligible in PGCPS. As you can see, our top three categories is ADHD, um, I'm sorry, medical and emotional impairments. Again, these are categories in which we collect the data for our system. But it should be noted that a five oh four disability can come from any impairment. That also separates us from IDEA, where you must fall into one of the fourteen educational disability categories. For five oh four disability, it is simply any impairment that substantially limits a major life activity or bodily function. Some updates and innovations that we have had in our office this year. I'm so excited um, for our five oh four ADA database. We are finally removed from Microsoft Word and we have entered the electronic age where we are able to be able to see five oh four data real-time versus us being, having to go to the schools to physically look in the students' folders to gather information. So, this has been a major um, lifesaver um, and much appreciated project. I'm proud that we were able to build it off of our schools', um, school information system, SchoolMax. So, it is designed um, directly and only for us. Um, to date, we have two hundred and thirty-seven employees who have completed our database training and have gained access to our system. That would be two hundred and twenty-six case managers and eleven building facilitators. To date, we have also successfully mediated three of our five current OCR cases for this year. Uh, mediation process is pending for the other two. Um, however, we have uh, made great success without having to go through investigation to work collaboratively with our families to resolve any issues that have been presented. And I would also like to um, give a shout-out for the Kerwin grant because we do not receive any state funding. Again, we are a federal regulation that is governed through the Office for Civil Rights. So, when we were afforded the Kerwin grant, we were able to buy great resources for our students um, such as fidgets, anxiety, distressers, um, for our professional school counselors. We were able to purchase yardstick um, books by Chip Wood for all elementary to middle schools to be able to help them understand where the average student would be, not just academically, but um, behaviorally at that age, to help us identify and help them identify what would be considered age-appropriate activities. Um, so, we have had um, a great time being able to support our students and our case managers and building facilitators. Um, I would say the most, um, we got out of the Kerwin funding as well would be able to move to a electronic training for our staff members as we all went virtual. It's been very hard to get our um, staff members to do training during the day. We cannot pull them from the buildings given the demands of the virtual learning. So, we were able to partner with a national resource to be able to provide an online training that could be accessed twenty-four hours a day from your cell phone, from your tablet. And so, we've monitored that and Kerwin was um, able to help us move through the virtual age um, and still support our staff members. We do have five oh four resources that are available on our site. The five oh four brochures, um, it gives you an understanding of what the referral process is, some of the key definitions such as um, the uh, parent or family member would hear at the table, such as substantial limitation or um, major life activity or bodily function. And it explains, again, the referral process, what is Section five oh four, and how disability defined under five oh four may differ from disability from a medical condition, from a physician or disability under IDEA. We also have administrative procedure five one four six that governs um, our Section five oh four practices for PGCPS and also our five oh four services website to the general public. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. And I was gonna say, I'm sure having everything digitized is really helpful. Yeah.
Say the least, yes.
Yeah, I know. Um, did, did my other colleagues have some questions for Ms. Butler? So, I, I guess before we uh, get ready to move forward, I mean, I thank you all for all of these presentations on today. And I guess I'd like to know, as you think about the area that you presented today, sort of what, what would you say would be maybe a, a challenge or something that you're currently trying to figure out or improve upon, like in your, in your area that you're working on?
I will start if that helps us out. Um, I would say that we are all transforming to um, virtual and then now moving back into in-person safely. And so, that does impact the, the le- the level, the level proximity helps support
Yeah.
our school teams. And so, with that restriction, um, right now for everyone's health and safety, I think that is just a challenge within itself. With all respect, to ensure that our school staff is um, not inundated and able to pre- to be able to support our students physically in the building. So, that is our major priority that we move through and that is just a challenge that um, we'll have to continue to persevere through from our office's perspective at this time.
Yeah. No, I can imagine that being a major challenge.
Um, I think for me-
Um, I think for me, one of the things I would like to help improve is consistency among our PBIS schools. You know, implementation, you know, can vary among the 134 schools and with PBIS being in our, in our state over 20 years, I would really like to move the needle a little better. A big challenge to that is turnovers, staff turnovers, administrative turnovers, even pre-pandemic. You know, I can have a coach this year and a team in training, and before they leave the parking lot in training, the team has already dissolved, right? And so, you know, and then we have schools year after year training new sets of people, which really prohibits implementation and rollout with fidelity as well as it's not fiscally, you know, if I'm training a school year after year after year because they have different people, that also, you know, doesn't work well with how we spend our money. So I really, that, that's something that's always a big rock for me as a coordinator. How can we move the needle to be more consistent? How can we really root this in schools? Again, going back to that analogy about fast food, it doesn't matter how many people, you know, McDonald's doesn't change their formula, how they do things, right? When they, when people leave, they bring other people in, and, and this is the standard. And so I really would like to move the needle with that, and it is very challenging when staff members feel pulled in a, you know, a lot of different directions, and they wear all these hats, and they, they don't want to lead the team or participate on the team. And, you know, trying to, to kind of get everyone on board in the same mindset is, uh, really is a big challenge to, to consistency. And so that's always something that is, um, something that I really want to, to see improved.
Say, as far as our RTI, our sit and SST process, having schools to really implement that RTI online tracking tool, and wherein teachers and teams are not feeling like this is one more thing, right? Because documentation takes time. It takes time to document, it takes time to monitor, it takes time to attend a meeting. And so there are lots of moving pieces that have to align in order to make the process go well. So I think staff members feeling comfortable with the tool and more and more schools being trained on it, us increasing our capacity to train. We have had one instructional specialist that was our sit team guru for the school system. And so just building our capacity to be able to provide technical support to schools who may need it, and just support schools along the way. Anissa raised the two great resources that I absolutely love by Hawthorne, and that is the PRAM, the Pre-Referral Intervention Manual, and the Behavior Intervention Manual. And those manuals are yay thick with lots of interventions that actually work and that are time-tested, that are utilized around the nation, if not the world. Those are our foundational books for child find and referral teams in every school system. And so to be able, I think, to get that resource and more and more hands, and then for people to really trust and utilize that resource as something that they can refer to or go to, if you will. So that's what I would think for our RTI and our sit team process.
Before I go to Mr. Moody, I don't want you to get your question again. That's not digital yet? That's still in that big book?
It's still in the big book, and I think the versions that may have a digital piece cost more than that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there, there is a digital version, but it is way more expensive. And it's something a little funky with the license too, when things go digital, if you want per person versus per school. But when you're looking at the budget, it is, it is way more expensive, so, you know.
Mr. Moody, thank you so much, Ms. Fraser. Uh-oh, okay, you're on mute. On mute, sorry.
Um, yeah, Board Member Shayle Adams, I just wanted to add, Anissa and I have, and Robin have talked about this a lot as a, um, a potential challenge, but, you know, so many schools have all these different teams. And, you know, we're, we've been spending, you know, like a couple of years trying to figure out, um, how do you not have this team, that team, that team, that team, that team? But is there a way to, to combine them? Because a lot of times, the person that's on the PBIS team is the person that's, you know, they're, they're all the teams. So, you know, just, just to give some thought to, and I'm sure we're not the only district or, or initiatives that have this, this concern, but how do you just kind of combine them so that it's, it's not, you know, 25 teams in a school? So I think that's one of the other things that we've been, you know, trying to figure out.
Yeah. And can I just add also, we've been working on, and Richard can attest to this, and even on a state level, how do we move past PBIS is bucks and coins and dojo points, and let's have a fun Friday or monthly incentive? Like, the training is 15 hours, and you get an MSDE credit, and that is not so you can be an event planner. And so when I, when participants come through my training, they're like, oh, this is way more than just that. Yeah, it is, and I would really like to move us past, even our parents, I, I have created a staff overview, which is only 45 minutes, that I offer to schools too, so that everyone in the building kind of gets an understanding of what PBIS, since obviously not everyone in the building goes through a 15-hour training. But I really would like to really move past that, that this is all it is, and move past, okay, these are all the things we have to do, you build an order, but we just want to jump to the fun stuff. So it's either we want to reward or we want to punish, and there's so much more to, to, to that, that addresses climate and culture that will give them back that instructional time. So that, that's really a, a big thing for us too.
You know, it just sounds so connected to what, in some of our previous meetings, Dr. White has talked about, you know, the emphasis on culturally responsive teaching and learning, and how that is like a core, you know, thing you all are working on in terms of professional development. And I think that synergy can come as that, you know? It just seems like that is the direction based on what we've been talking about throughout the year, so. And I just want to say before we go to Board Member Boozer Struthers, look, we got national award winners in our district. If we, like you said, McDonald's has to train people every year, they make a video. We need a video, our, with our national leaders that are killing it. We've got, we've got greatness right here, and we can capture that, you know? But that's awesome. I, I am really grateful for all of those in-depth presentations, and I want to, um, right now, turn it over to, I know I'm totally not following my script, so just bear with me, y'all. We're gonna move into a focus work group-led discussion and presentation by Board Member Pamela Boozer Struthers. She's gonna talk about the Climate Change Action Plan. So I'll turn it over to her now. And did you have some slides? Uh, Aisha, do we have those? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're not using slides. Thank you so much, Chair Adam Stafford. And I'd also like to invite Kate Colzoni, who's one of our lead volunteers, who is a PGCPs parent, Caesar Chavez Dual Spanish Emergence School, and has been part of moving us through this, this process since this past April, along with Joseph Jakuta, who's also, who's essentially served as my volunteer co-chair and who is also a PGCPs parent. And of course, shout-outs to David Smith, who has been administering the work group, and to Valerie Urban, who is with us every month as well, planning the meetings and on behalf of administration. So right now, uh, the, I'm, I'm coming to you now because the, the three committees of my board colleagues, you are our first stop on the tour of the plan coming to draft, and then where we go from here. And I wanted to make sure that all of the board members are really, uh, kind of, you know, kind of, kind of get everyone back in tune to the climate action work and the resources that you have as board members to be able to evaluate this plan when you receive it for feedback, and then also final vote. And the, the predominantly, all of those resources are on pgcp.org backslash climate. You can see recordings of all of the meetings, we would meet for an hour and a half, and we would have our, our work group experts and external experts come to us and, and, and help us really dive deep into PGCPs operations and curriculum. And all, all of that's recorded, and there's written summaries, so that if, you know, for, you know, we met with Budget Operations and Fiscal Affairs last week, we focused in on those topics. So tonight, we'll talk about curriculum and outreach, education outreach, and Kate will join me and some of, give you some example of where, where headed. But I, I wanted to remind everyone, the timeline, we are working diligently to get our first, like, draft ready for review. It will go out to our work group and all of our expert guests who joined us, and I do want to take a moment to thank Dr. White, Dr. McDaniel, and Dr. Cadet, who were our key presenters for curriculum and for the curriculum and CTE. And our work group members, Donald Bell, who's the environmental outreach educator, uh, who works with our middle school and high school green clubs, teams, Michelle Smith, who for majority of our time together as an assistant principal at Largo High School, which she helped to launch one of our first composting pilot projects in the school, but she's now at Academy Health Sciences. And Jamie Alston, who's our energy analyst in Building Services, she creates education programs with industry partners. So our students have worked with the energy industry and are, uh, learning about careers for the future, not only through our teachers and academic division, but also through, um, you know, our operations, uh, staff, which we've learned a lot, and we've documented everything we've learned, we documented on that website. So you could learn a lot about where, where we've been and where we're headed. And so between now and, you know, we'll go through this first layer of review with our internal and external experts, um, and then ultimately have a draft that we're ready to have a student town hall and another, uh, town hall for, for all, everyone interested in the school community, PGCPs and externally. And then ultimately, the board receives a, a, the first reader draft on March 24th and a vote on April 7th, with the goal that we would have this voted on in April just before Earth Day. And so we could kind of have a, you know, a couple, a really good marketing of the plan. And all of this, what's really important is we're aligning with the, the county councils' Climate Action Commission, and some of you may, may be aware that Councilmember Dernoga has been a leader on that, and the commission has present, it will be, has written this incredible plan for the county. Donald Bell from PGCPs served on that commission. And we have a pathway of essentially PGCPs, I think, it's, what I, the impression I'm getting is, we'll be the first county agency to respond to that plan and have our subplan. So I'm really proud of that, and it's a real guiding force for us around all the aspects of the plan. So that, I would recommend, if you, it's a big plan, it takes hours to review, but if you have time to read the county commission's climate action plan, you will really understand how PG, where PGCPs has to respond. And PGCPs is like coded in the plan. I think we go beyond the recommendations in that plan, and, and it's certainly on curriculum and education. And our students who serve, who serve on the work group, um, two of them really wanted to be here tonight. One unfortunately is sick and didn't attend, couldn't even attend school today, and that's Nithin Gudara from Oxon Hill High School, and Brianna Malcolm from Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Dual enrollment courses started tonight, so she, I believe, is still in class. Uh, but they wrote a statement that I'll be emailing the full statement, but they wanted you to hear their voice about being students on the work group. And so Brianna says, "Growing up in the Caribbean, I experienced climate change firsthand with the loss of a beach close to my hometown. Since then, I've had a passion for making a change in my community. The Climate Change Action Focus Work Group has been a great experience for me because I have the opportunity to combat climate action change within my county." And she, it goes on, but I'm gonna send the statement to everyone. And Nithin says, "My experience in the work, work group has been a good one. I've had the opportunity to listen and learn potential solutions for the issues in our communities in the world, which has been very insightful. I believe that we are responsible for protecting our world and ensuring that there is a safe future for the billions of people that come tomorrow. I can't pass laws and policies, but I can and I will continue to use my voice to advocate and fight for a better and brighter future for all, because I care. Students should and definitely can help with the implementation of the plan, since we are the future." And I, and we've had dozens of students involved in the, uh, getting to the recommendations in the plan. And so what I want to do is just transition a little bit to what that means for curriculum and, and all these educational outreach, uh, learning opportunities that, that students can have in the future. And I thought, you know, I'd pass it to Kate right now to describe a little bit about, you know, what our process was, is how we've thought about curriculum and some of the, 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 sort of the rough draft of some recommendations that you may see in this area.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Struthers. So we, um, we used a lot of the input from experts, uh, the student forums and the public forum to start gathering and organizing some of the recommendations. And then PGCPs has a great infrastructure of environmental literacy with the William Schmidt Center, um, and, and, and some of the other, um, in the, in Camp Schmidt, and some of the great, um, opportunities that they provide to students. And so, um, just generally speaking, I would say there's some short, mid, and, and longer-term recommendations. Short-term, um, are the group really wanted to get a, a climate curriculum work group up and running, and something that included students. Students wanted to contribute both on an, um, a system-wide level as well as a school-based level. Uh, um, so, so getting involved in, in helping with curriculum development, um, and helping build in some of the hands-on learning experience, not just, not just the formal learning, but also the experiential learning and the peer-to-peer learning, um, and learning, um, more climate technology from operations, like, um, so being able to kind of take advantage of the spectrum of things that PGCPs is doing, um, using the, um, even trying to create and implement environmental ethics, principles, and norms for all students, teachers, and, and staff to adhere to. So is, so everyone is, has kind of a standard of, of what, um, the environmental ethic should be, and, and is doing, um, similar things. So there, they, it can be measured and looked at on a year-to-year basis. Longer-term, um, and then we're talking, you know, one to two, two to three years even, um, be, because we're talking curriculum. So how do we get climate curriculum into benchmark standards and things? We know that that takes a while. We know there's a formal curriculum process. Um, and so figuring out how to, how to leverage, um, that into the formal curriculum and benchmarking process, as well as, um, building new partnerships with businesses, with ENGOs, um, and, and being able to take advantage of some of the other, um, outreach and, and, and education opportunities that are provide, can be provided to PGCPs students. So that's just a couple things that we're thinking about. Um, and it's just been a great, uh, experience, a process to be a part of. We look forward to formalizing that even more over the next month or so.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kate. And, you know, one thing I would say about the students is the, the hands-on opportunities to make change in the school building, to then take back to the community, is really resonating at the top level of, you know, the students are, they, they know if the recycling and material waste programs are working. They know if their classmates and others are using the bins properly, and they, and they're really interested in the composting pilots, and how do we expand that? Because it's so tangible. And also, I, I definitely see a lot of interest from the students when, um, as I noted, Jamie Alston, our energy analyst, talks about the dashboards, that new buildings will have these really sophisticated dashboards that show you all the energy use, and, you know, it's a teaching tool. And, and oftentimes, you hear these with the, the net zero energy schools, but certainly we'll be doing this, it sounds like with our It sounds like with our six new middle schools and all of our modern builds coming up. Those panels are used for teaching, you know? And I definitely see a lot of interest in that and we need to get those into every building. And how to, not only will it, you know, reduce our carbon footprint and save real dollars, it's an educational tool on, on our, um, for every, every student. And it, and also it relates to the potential of what are these green jobs for the future? Like how, you know, moving into the solar energy industry, the electric bus industry, um, the solar, solar grids for energy and, you know, the battery backups. This, you know, we see a lot of, um, the students are giving a lot of feedback about, you know, the, the fact that, that they can be part of PG CPS's change and part of the county, but that they could bring it back home. They could start composting at home, just like recyc, just like we did with recycling. And we're still working really hard on that. And so we got to start somewhere. So I believe we're probably gonna end up seeing some type of student climate action core uh, modeled on, you know, some existing models for youth in climate action. And, you know, I sort of be, you know, begin to imagine it kind of in line with like, say, the SGAs and, and pea grass. And that, it's a really a great way to network students beyond their own school building, uh, particularly at the middle and high school level. So uh, those are, those are some highlights I wanted to share. And again, our main purpose was for, you know, we, I, I think you recognize that we have been deep in this since last April. We have the benefit of hearing every expert, um, hearing for internally from PG CPS, working out problems and discussion. That's been, you know, twenty, thirty hours of work that the board members will not get to relive that. So I just wanted to make sure you, all of you had, uh, knew where these resources were and, you know, could start to be thinking about that and questions you might have. Um, so, um, but uh, Chair Adam Stafford will uh, hand it over to you because I see there's hand raised.
Absolutely. I'm so excited about this and the opportunity mentioned for, you know, co- collaboration around curriculum with experiential learnings, particularly on climate change. You just see that in so many places that it's just the, a really engaging topic that can go across so many disciplines, even as young as, you know, elementary school, using math to sort of understand how to build their own recycling program at their school. There's just so many ways and so many connections between this work and, you know, actual academic work. So that, that's really exciting. Um, I, I wanted to ask before we go to um, Ms. Irvin, just how many schools have environmental science programs or is that something that's in every school? I know in Fairmont Heights, they have an environmental science program, but is that something that specific schools have?
Well, in terms of curriculum, I'll have to defer to Dr. White. But there's the, there's the green clubs and green, green teams. That is like more of the educational outreach that Donald Bell um, helps, you know, schools with. And then there's of course the uh, green school certification that we are the leader, we're the leader in the state for, for that program. And we do have that documented on the, on the website. And so that's reaching, you know, what, I think more than half of our, I think about half of our um, plus uh, schools. And that is, that includes elementary. So students are learn, and they are contributing learning at a very young level. And I could say, watching my son's school as a green, green school, the um, education they receive and the messaging is uh, more than I get, you know, say as an adult in the community. Like when they, when the issue of moving from plastic straws to paper straws was um, moving as a legislative issue, there was really effective posters and engagement at the elementary level about why that's important. And, and so there's, there was that real-time, real-time education on policy happening even at, at that level.
That's awesome. I know, um, Ms. Irvin, you had your hand up.
Thank you very much, um, Chairwoman Adam Stafford. I just wanted to add something um, to this conversation. It's been a true honor and a privilege to serve alongside, aside a Board Member Boozer Struthers and Kate Colzoni and so many other people since last April. But I'm also um, working uh, in the legislature, uh, this ninety-day session. And I can tell you that there are quite a number of very important bills coming before the state legislature that marry up with all of the incredible work that's happening here in Prince George's County. Uh, one of them is on electric buses, another one on composting and farm to school. All of the many issues that um, the working group has been engaged in uh, since last April. But um, as PG CPS folks, we should be really, really proud of what this uh, working group is doing because people are coming to us as experts and leaving saying, wow, Prince George's County Public Schools is way ahead of everyone else on many of the issues that this working group is taking up. So we are leading an effort, uh, I believe statewide to make sure that a lot of these um, really, really important issues will become law most likely during this legislative session.
That's awesome. Well, congratulations to all of the work group members. And thank you so much for your leadership on this, Board Member Boozer Struthers. And I'm so excited to learn more about this as you go from committee to committee and the different ways that it will interact with the entire school system. So thank you so much for your work on this and for the presentation.
Yeah, I appreciate it and thank you all so much for your time. And of course, I'm a resource at, at any time on questions you, you might have as we work through this process.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. All right. So colleagues, we're about ten minutes over. Um, and I wanted to uh, just mention that follow-up items from previous committee meetings are gonna be posted on Board Docs. And again, I just want to thank everyone for being a part of this meeting. I learned so much. Thank you so much to Dr. White and Dr. Colley and your teams for their great presentations. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
All right, second, okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. We are adjourned. Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Um, Aisha, you can, yeah.